The regular council meeting of Tuesday, April 5th, 2011 is in order. Last bell please rise. We're going to have the invitation led by Councilman Kara and I'll be the pledge.
Dear Lord, this is a prayer I'd like to offer to our athletes. It was written by him from pink. Dear Lord, in the struggle that goes on through life, we ask for a field that is fair, a chance that is equal with all the strife, the courage to strive unto the dare. And if we should win, let it be by the code, with our faith and our honor held high. And if we should lose, let us stand by our Lord and here is where it will lie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we do the roll call, I'd like to call for a moment of silence. We recently lost a dear friend, somebody who spent a lot of time sitting in those yellow chairs covering our borough council meeting, of course Joe Plasko, who's very involved in our community and was a good friend of the borough. So I'd ask you all to just tie your heads in a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call.
Kara.
Here.
Conley.
Here.
Mace.
Here.
Smolgin.
Here.
Turtell.
Here.
Trudich.
Here. I'd like to have a reading of the minutes of the regular council meeting until on Tuesday, March 15th, 2011.
I'm making sure to make some minutes as quickly.
We have a motion by Stephen and a second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. Because I have a special presentation today and I'd like to call on the chairman of our Recreation Youth Committee, Dave Nice.
Thank you. I'm sure as many here are aware we had an outstanding winter athletic season at Tamaki High School this year. Invitations were extended to Garth Lekitski, Dane DeWire, and the girls' basketball team for the accomplishments that they either individually or collectively as a team achieved this past winter season. And I just would like, unfortunately Garth and Dane were not able to join us tonight, but I'd like to read the certificates of achievement that we put together for them, specifically for Dane in recognition of winning the PIA double A District 11 Class Double A Diving Championship and the District 11 Most Outstanding Diver Award on February 26th, 2011 in Hertz, Pennsylvania. Dane finished with 451.60 points, the highest score of any diver in school history. Dane also won his fourth straight Schuylkill League Diving Championship, setting a league record of 494.50 points. The Tamaki Borough Council commends Dane DeWire for this outstanding athletic achievement. And for Garth Lekitski, in recognition of winning the PIA double A Class Double A State Wrestling Championship on March 12th, 2011 in Hershey, Pennsylvania, and finishing the season undefeated at 42-0, Garth won the gold medal in the 215-pound weight class, a first in school history. Garth posted several school records, including most wins in a single season, 42, most pins in a season, 33, and most career wins, 129. The Tamaki Borough Council commends Garth Lekitski for this exceptional athletic achievement. And I'll make sure that both of those get up to Mike Bromiak so that he can distribute them as well. As you can see, we have members of the girls' basketball team as well. Would you like to come up and join me here, please?
On behalf of the Tamaki Raiders and Tamaki School District, I'd like to thank Council for having us here today. It was a great honor for us to represent Tamaki this year. It was an outstanding season. And to, like his point, we will miss Joe Plasko and our book, which will be a missing piece on the sports side as well as for these guys here. So, but thank you very much. Can I hear just the players here?
Actually, if I could read this, and I'm not sure, go ahead and do that. In recognition of winning the PIA double A District 11 Class AAA Girls Basketball Championship on March 5th, 2011, the Lady Raiders finished the 2010-2011 season capturing the Schuylkill League Championship for the second consecutive year, and the District 11 Championship for the third consecutive year, earning a place in the state playoffs. Tamaki Borough Council commends the Tamaki Blue Raiders Girls Basketball Team for this outstanding athletic achievement.
And before we get going, again, Council, I know you've got a busy schedule, but just today, Amy Zayer, who's right next to Dave, was announced first team All-State for the AAA.
Absolutely. I do have certificates for everybody, and they're not a medical order, so I'll do the best I can. You'll have to help me out with who's here, who's not. Janelle's Nicole?
No, she's not here.
Okay. Cassie Arrow? I know she's not here. Some of them I recommend I send over to my gym, sorry. Jordan Uche?
No, she's not here.
Okay. Kayla Hope? I know she's here. Congratulations. You're welcome. Corey DeGolgo?
Corey's here.
Good. Nicole Sliedda?
Nicole's not here.
All right. Amanda Soler?
Amanda Soler.
Okay. This is exactly the back of the alphabet here. Chris Keen Streisel? Congratulations. Sorry. Maria Streisel?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Caitlin Trainor? Congratulations. Allison Upday? Kevor Erden? Jacqueline Plasic? Alexandra Wanger? Ashley Walker?
Ashley.
Congratulations. You're welcome. Stacey Wallace? You're welcome. And I appreciate this one for you. Amy Zayer. If I can pass on the certificates of trust. That would be great. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Sure.
Do you want to say anything else? You guys can all get out of there.
Spalding, come on, break. You're going to want to get down a little bit.
Can I have you guys in the front just put your certificates open and hold this. And kind of make it kind of like a team. Right here, one, two, three. One more? One, two, three.
All right, Andre, one, two.
One, two. One, one, two. No, I'm blinking. I did something wrong, I'm blinking.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, place recognition for the roll.
If I could just take one more to counsel for kind of a little sad day. Allison Upday, who is our defending state champion, javelin, who came back from a major sophomore year, actually yesterday joined javeling, tore her ACL, a discus. So, you know, unfortunately, she's not going to be able to compete her senior year. She's trapped in the block. So, if yous were aware of that, you know, being our sports, we're happy and recognize the girls are, and of course, we're sad to hear that news. And, you know, we hope her speedy recovery, they go to Brolzer, we're up to see her now.
And we had Allison here last year. Quite a treat. Very nice. I appreciate you coming. Your team has been a great source of pride for the entire community and really has built something to watch. And it was very nice to see that community get so excited about it. You did a great job, the coaches are very, we're all very proud of you.
And likewise, I think, you know, we love the community back for their support. I mean, it was awesome for us. So, again, thank you for giving us this moment. Thank you.
Communication.
I have three. First is from Tamaki branch of the YMCA, Nicholas Lingmont. For the last two years, the Tamaki YMCA has been granted the use of the Bungalo Pool for use during their summer adventure camp. At this time, we would like to request use of the pool for the upcoming 2011 summer. Thank you for considering the use of your pool facility for the Tamaki YMCA this summer. We know the borough pool gets a tremendous amount of use in the summertime and appreciate any kind of accommodations that you can provide for us. We're requesting use of the 9:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. time slot. Hopefully, the time requested will not interfere with the regular hours of the pool. Again, we appreciate anything you can provide for us.
I'd like to make a motion, pray after the question, everybody. There's a motion by Stephen, there's a question by Stephen. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Could we send a letter, thank you, too?
Letter sent.
Excellent, thank you.
Last I have is a letter from William and Carolyn Barber. I would like to make a request to have our handicap parking sign relocated from the front of 200 Pine Street to the side of the same address, which would be on Middle Street. Since my father's untimely death, we have taken over possession of the property and now use the side entrance as our main access to the property. It would be to our advantage to have the parking sign moved off of Route 309 and onto Middle Street by our gate entrance. We would appreciate your consideration in this matter.
I make a motion, we grant this request. Second. There's a motion by Stephen, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Could we send a letter, thank you, too?
Letter sent.
Excellent, thank you.
Last I have is a letter from William and Carolyn Barber. I would like to make a request to have our handicap parking sign relocated from the front of 200 Pine Street to the side of the same address, which would be on Middle Street. Since my father's untimely death, we have taken over possession of the property and now use the side entrance as our main access to the property. It would be to our advantage to have the parking sign moved off of Route 309 and onto Middle Street by our gate entrance. We would appreciate your consideration in this matter.
I make a motion, we grant this request. Second. There's a motion by Stephen, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Special business. Kevin, we're already with the Walcott inspection.
Oh, the A1, A1 Services Shenandoah has completed inspection of the Walback Creek. They finished a little early, in fact. They were there about three and a half days by our count. And we sent them along to Panther Creek to check for legal discharge there as well, in which they uncovered a few. They took their findings to our community, Alpha Vanish Company, and the two companies have been reviewing them. And there's, having a dialogue about, if any additional dye testing that we did, et cetera. They also moved a few samples and some questionable discharge pipes, which we have to run in our sewer plant. But the field work's done, it's in the hands of the engineer. I don't have a timeframe for when we're getting a report yet in the engineer. When we do, I'll share that with all of you. Can you give them a timetable, or is it typically at their discretion? We didn't talk exact date, but if you, if you like, I can give them that. Would a month from now be inappropriate? Would a month from now be inappropriate? Oh, I don't think it would be that much.
They know we're under a consent.
Yeah. Okay.
But we shouldn't let them tell. Billy's out.
And we've been constant, in a while, I've been constant contact with A1 and Alpha Vanish. I was also, I have another note, Pendot sent a contractor to town today to inspect the areas underneath Route 209. It's part of their bridge inspection program. So if you saw a truck and some tripods and workers going around Walback Creek, that's what it was.
Kevin, did you get a copy of A1's report, or just up at Ben?
They gave their video and their note, field notes and everything directly to Ben. And I know Ben has questioned a few things. They found several pipes that have multiple connections, for example, three, four homes sharing a single network. That's quite common, not only here, but in our region, it's very common. That's one thing that may require inspection, is how we manage those multiple connections. Leave them as they are or make them all get individual connections. Our regulations don't exactly specify that. And that's what we are consulting.
Anybody still have any questions for Kevin on the Walcott inspection? I had to ask Kathy Kunkler herself, the neighborhood manager, to come and give us an update on not only the resolutions that she was asking us to adopt today, but also to give us an update on the playground and the concession stand project. Do you have an update or anything?
Just by going by, by going through.
I know that they've.
They're working, they're working on it.
If you haven't been up, if you haven't driven by the playground recently, it's really coming along nicely. Kathy asked us to adopt two resolutions. One is for the, the first one is for the residential reinvestment grant. It's a grant application that she would successfully use to develop the parking lot and landscaping at Hunter and Spur Street. The council had a copy of that resolution, the application for $150,000. We have a quiet motion by John, is there a second? Second. Second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All the roll call votes.
Kara?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Smolgin?
Yes.
Turtell?
Yes.
Trudich?
Yes.
First.
And the second motion is for the organizational and operational grant, that's going down to $100,000. There's a motion by Stephen, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All the roll call votes.
Kara?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Smolgin?
Yes.
Turtell?
Yes.
Trudich?
Yes.
First.
And the second motion is for the organizational and operational grant, that's going down to $100,000. There's a motion by Stephen, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? If none, all call votes.
Kara?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Smolgin?
Yes.
Turtell?
Yes.
Trudich?
Yes.
First.
And the second motion is for the organizational and operational grant, that's going down to $100,000. There's a motion by Stephen, second by Dave. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? If none, all call votes.
Kara?
Yes.
Conley?
Yes.
Mace?
Yes.
Smolgin?
Yes.
Turtell?
Yes.
Trudich?
Yes.
First.
Earl managers report.
Well, first, I advertised for this, for refusing recycling contract. I gave, but also a copy of the advertising along with the, of a page from specifications. It's the bit for, that we, one of the items that we must return to here, Bill. We're looking at, it's very similar to the last time we put this up for today, we're going to throw on to a reader contract for collection of garbage, recycling, recycling bulky items, coal ashes, et cetera. Bag limit remains at six bags and one bulky item, and then all ashes and all the items to be collected. So that's, that's been advertised. If anyone would like to see clear specifications, let me know. Bit open is scheduled for Monday, April 18th, which is before our council's end of year. Some of our other projects that we have going on, I want to talk about the Walback. The pool backwash tank project is ready to go. A notice, of course, it was sent out, expect that to begin any day, and as soon as the weather clears up, they should start pouring pad for the, the tank. The sewer plant energy project is progressing.
Are they going to need to take any kind of heavy equipment inside plants for that?
Inside plants? Yeah, yeah, certainly they will.
Okay. If they can make any kind of accommodations to not leave grass in the grass in Long Hill, to get from the street to the city.
Well, they, you know, most contracts, and this one as well, they're required to restore anything that's disturbed.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Kevin.
They'll definitely need a large piece of equipment to put the tank in place. To be, to be on the construction, shouldn't require any, they're.
Okay, thank you.
And our energy project at Sewer Plant is progressing. The deadline is May 12th, and hoping nothing, encounter any problems. So far, so far it's progressing very well. And DEP has been even close watching that project, and we meet there every two to three weeks, and so far everyone's pleased. Also, the sewer pumping station, we've reached a minimum of any price for repairs after a great deal of dialogue with the insurance company, and that should be starting very soon as well. And, oh, just wanted to note, the council, we're related to our garbage and recycling contract. We have exhausted our supply of recycling bins. I want to bring that to your attention, and perhaps if you have a discussion about ordering some or not.
The bin you charged me $10 for, you charged me $10 for that bin?
I charged, we charged you for that.
What did you get?
No.
Yeah, you gave you $10 to get that bin one time ago.
Oh, initially?
Yeah.
Oh, the, the square ones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We were talking, did they charge for the bin?
I don't remember when we first gave out the bins.
I remember because they gave you money for it.
I believe you taught. I don't, I don't recall the initial, the initial bins that we're getting out. Lately, we, well, the last time we ordered them, we got those. Last time we ordered this, we got those tubs, like those little wash tubs.
Want to do another one? Somebody's going to want to do one, not only half a ton box, you could get it. I don't know.
We got 200.
You get 200 last time?
I can get you some prices.
I think it was, I think it was 200, you got them about two years ago.
And weren't they about $9 or $10 apiece?
I don't know.
We've given away all of those now.
Kevin, just to add something to that, we just did a recent inspection over at the Majestic House, and I don't know how the high-rise handled theirs, but everyone was over there giving, was giving a bin, and they're all stored downstairs. I'm sure somebody contacted them. They're not using them because they have an in-house recycling system. So they're probably, I don't know how many apartments are over there, but there's at least 30 bins over there.
We'll give them a call and see if we can get those back if they're not using them.
The high-rise?
That's, I don't know. They, they, they basically work the same way, they have a chute system and all those.
Yeah, there's a hundred, there's a base, I think.
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't see no, them having them stored, but I've definitely seen Majestic Houses, or store places.
We'll call management of the high-rise too, and see if they have any, yes. Thanks for pointing that out, I think we want to, if that was the case.
We have a separate chute, garbage and recycling.
Majestic does, they have two separate ones. The high-rise just has one chute, yeah.
Yeah. That's just a garbage chute.
Is it okay with council, Kevin gets us some prices on bins and investigates the, what's available for Majestic House?
Yeah, I want to make note of that, I'd say keep the bank or mention that to you.
Okay.
That's, that's what I have.
Before we move on, I see that Kathy's here. We already adopted the resolutions, but if you have any update on the south porch, or maybe you can tell us what the application, what the resolution before, give us more detail about what the applications were.
Okay, well, the resolutions are for two separate things. One is for year four and five for operational funds, and the other one is $150,000 in residential reinvestment, which we hope to use at this Bruce Hunter Street, passive park there. Mr. Presini ran into some difficulties, and I mean, I haven't talked to him lately, but he's still trying, but it looks like the cost is going to be a little bit beyond what we can afford. So if we can do it and rent him the spots, that would work just as well. And also some money for, to restart the facade improvement program, if we get funded now. Because everybody knows the budget's kind of tight, and your community's money is not guaranteed, so hopefully we'll receive, I, no guarantees, maybe, maybe year four operational funds, not, not two years, but we're going to apply for them both and see what happens. Playground, if you've been up that way, is certainly coming along. The community center, they're working on the inside now, the outside is pretty much finished. The general contractor expects to be done one month from today. Expect's to be, we're not going to hold our breath, but he has given us that date, so we are planning a ribbon cutting for maybe around the 23rd of May, and then over the Memorial Day holiday, we're going to have a grand reopening, the free hot bars and drinks, and try and get everybody to come home and inhale and see the much newer and exciting new south ward.
Kathy, I don't know the specs of the community center. How big is, how many square feet is that?
I don't know.
Well, bigger than this room?
No, it's, it's, it's about maybe three quarters the size of this room.
Okay.
And it includes an office for the home street manager.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Come on, you gotta have a question.
You're doing a good job.
Well, thank you. It's kind of slow and hard to see things happening in order. We also have cleanup scheduled for April 16th, just as the beautification does, we'll be up in the south ward at 8:30. At Playground Manager's Office, actually, Playground is closed, we're not going in unless you have your hard hats and safety vests. So anybody who has some spare time on April 16th, 8:30 will be there. So, and our, our steps are being used quite a bit. The students at the college, they're accompanied, they actually live on Hunter Street, and they're using it very regularly, which makes me very happy. And I guess that's, that's it for it now. I want to ask you any other questions? Oh, we do have a new logo that our committee, one of our committee members designed. She took some aspects of our old logo and combined it with something new, and we will be unveiling that when we have our ribbon cutting.
Thank you, Kathy. Committee reports. Building and Equipment Committee.
Motion advertised for a 2009 10 eight or six cylinder automatic Dodge Charger. Please clap.
There's a motion by John, second by Ken. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it. I can tell you, if you've ever made a motion to buy a police car, less discussion in rural history. Parking and traffic.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for handicap parking spaces, he's all qualified. I'm just going to read the name and the address. Eleanor Wheeler, 216 Center Street, William Valentine, 122 North Greenwood Street, Kristen Kaiser Jr., 231 Worksburg, Leon, I may get that wrong.
Just give us the address.
Okay, 251 Play Street, Philip Bryan III, 402 Hazel Street, and Mary Alderman, 115 Gay Street.
Clarification is to grant all of those, correct?
Yes.
Second. There's a motion by Steve and a second by Dave, I'm going to let Georgia make sure she has all of them. You have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Okay, we, we have one that we just got in our package, so we can't come around yet. Okay, I did ask council about Rome Mill Avenue, they gave us a request that they would like the speed limit changed to lower the speed limit. I talked to most of the gentlemen here, and we feel that we've already addressed that situation. To go any lower, it's redundant. If your children are coming in the street, you have a playground over there, take them over. But to go any lower, you know.
Construction should require any better.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And our energy project at Sewell Plant is progressing. They've deadline May 12th and hoping nothing to encounter any problems. So far, so far it's progressing very well. And D E P has been keeping a close watch on that project. And we meet there every two to three weeks and so far everyone's pleased. Also, the Sewell Pumping Station, we've reached a minimum of any price fully prepared after a great deal of dialogue with the insurance company. And that should be starting very soon as well. Oh, just wanted to note, the council were related to our garbage and recycling contract. We have exhausted our supply of recycling bins. I want to grab your attention and perhaps if you have a discussion about ordering some or not.
The bin you charged me ten dollars for.
Hmm?
You charged me ten dollars for that bin?
I charged, we charged you for that. No.
Yeah, you gave you ten dollars to get that bin one time ago.
Oh, initially?
Yeah.
Oh, the, the square ones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're trying to talk into they charged for the bin.
It just came out. I don't remember when we first gave out the bins.
I remember because they gave you money for it.
I believe you thought. I don't re- I don't recall the initial, the initial bins that we're getting out. Lately, we, we, well, last time we ordered them, we got those. Last time we ordered this supply, we got those tubs, like those little wash tubs.
Want to do another one?
Oh, nobody wants to do that one. Half a ten bucks. You can do it later. Say you don't for ten?
No, but, but. We got two hundred. You get two hundred last time? I can get you some prices.
I think it was, I think it was two hundred and you got them about two years ago.
And weren't they about nine or ten dollars apiece?
Maybe they looked at themselves earlier.
Just, we've, we've given away all of those now.
Kevin, just to add something to that, we just did a recent inspection over at the Majestic House and I don't know how the Hyrras handled theirs, but everyone was over there giving, was giving a bin and they're all stored downstairs. I'm sure somebody contacted them. They're not using them because they have an in-house recycling system. So they're probably, I don't know how many apartments are over there, but there's at least thirty bins over there.
Wow. And we'll, we'll give them a call and see if we can get those back if they're not using them.
Hyrras?
That's, I don't know. I, they, they're, they basically work the same way. They have a chute system and all those.
Yeah, there's a, there's a base.
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't see no, them having them stored, but definitely seen Majestic Houses are stored in place.
We'll call management of Hyrras too and see if they have any, yes. Thanks for pointing that out. I think we want to, that was the case.
We have a separate chute, garbage and recycling.
Majestic does, they have two separate ones. Hyrras just has one chute.
Yeah, that's just a garbage chute.
Is it okay with council, Kevin gets us some prices on bins and investigates the, what's available for Majestic House?
Yeah, I want to make note of that. I'd say keep the bank or mention that to you. Okay. We do, that's, that's what I have.
Before we move on, I see that Kathy's here. We already adopted the resolutions, but do you have any update on the South Ward? Or maybe you can tell us what the application, what the resolution before, give us more detail about what the applications are for.
Okay, well, the resolutions are for two separate things. One is for year four and five for operational funds. And the other one is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in residential reinvestment, which we hope to use at this Bruce Hunter Street, uh, passive park there. Mr. Priscine ran into some difficulties and, I mean, I haven't talked to him lately, but he's still trying, but it looks like the cost is going to be a little bit beyond what we can afford. So if we can do it and renting the spots, that would work just as well. And also some money for, to restart the facade improvement program if we get funded now. Because everybody knows the budget's kind of tight and your community's money is not guaranteed, so hopefully we'll receive it, I, no guarantees, maybe, maybe year four operational funds and not, not two years, but we're going to apply for them both and see what happens. Playground, if you've been up that way, is certainly coming along. The community center, uh, they're working on the inside now. The outside is pretty much finished. The general contractor expects to be done one month from today. Expect to be, we're not going to hold our breath, but he has given us that date, so we are planning a ribbon cutting for maybe around the twenty-third of May and then over Memorial Day holiday, we're going to have a grand reopening, the free hot bars and drinks and try and get everybody to come home and inhale and see the much newer and exciting new South Ward.
Kathy, I don't know the specs of the community center. How big is, how many square feet is that?
I don't know. I don't.
Bigger than this room?
No, it's, uh, it's, it's about, um, maybe three quarters the size of this room.
Okay.
And it includes an office for the home street manager.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Come on, you gotta have a question.
You're doing a good job.
Well, thank you. It, uh, it's kind of slow and hard to see things happening in order. Uh, we also have cleanup scheduled for April sixteenth, just as the beautification does. We'll be up in the South Ward eight-thirty at Playground Manager's office, actually. Playground is closed, we're not going in unless you have your hard hats and safety vest. So anybody who has some spare time on April sixteenth, eight-thirty will be there. So. And our, our steps are being used quite a bit. The students at the college, they're accompanied, they actually live on Hunter Street and they're using it very regularly, which makes me very happy. And I guess that's, that's it for it now. Is there any other questions? Oh, we do have a new logo that our committee, one of our committee members designed. She took some aspects of our old logo and combined it with something new and we will be unveiling that when we have our ribbon cutting too.
Thank you, Kathy. For committee reports, building and equipment committee.
Motion advertised for a two thousand nine for a ten, eight or six cylinder automatic Dodge Charger. Please clap.
There's a motion by John, second by Ken. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor wish to address this motion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. Yeah, I just have it. I can tell you, if you've ever made a motion to buy a police car, less discussion in, in rural history. Parking and traffic committee.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for handicapped parking spaces. He's all qualified. I'm just going to read the name and the address. Eleanor Wheeler, two sixteen Center Street, William Valentine, one twenty-two North Greenwood Street, Kristen Kaiser Jr., two thirty-one Worksburg, Leon. I may get that wrong.
Just give us the address.
Okay, two fifty-one Play Street, Philip Bryan III, four oh two Hazel Street, and Mary Alderman, one fifteen Gay Street.
Clarification is to grant all of those, correct?
Yes.
Second. So the motion by Steve and the second by Dave, I'm going to let Georgia make sure she has all of them. Very good. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. Yeah, I just have it.
Okay, we, we have one that we just got in our package, so we can't come around yet. Okay, I did ask council about Rome Mill Avenue. They gave us a request that they would like the speed limit changed to lower the speed limit. I talked to most of the gentlemen here and we feel that we've already addressed that situation. To go any lower, it's redundant. If your children are coming in the street, you have a playground over there, take them over. But to go any lower, you know, we've put stop signs up, we.
The chief spent plenty of time there.
Correct.
To drop down to five miles an hour, you would have to basically sit there with enforcement constantly to maintain that speed limit. And with such a narrow street, with the home so close to the street, fifteen, twenty miles an hour feels like forty, fifty miles an hour as you go down that street. So, uh, you know, it would be difficult to do anything different.
Right, so at this time, we're just going to leave as is.
Is there any children at place on incident?
Yes, we put up two of them.
Yeah.
I think it's one every walk.
Yeah.
Is there not much else we could do there?
No. We have addressed that situation. Kathy, can I ask you one more question about, what is number twenty-five requesting move no parking sign near two fifteen Cedar Street?
Yeah, that property is owned by Tim Stoll, called it one day. And his, his concern was, uh, delivery trucks pull up on the sidewalk there and the way the sign is positioned, he, uh, he would prefer them not driving over his sidewalk or over his motorhome. And if, if the sign was moved to the property line, uh, between his home, he has the home right next to the man's, between his home and the man's, if the sign was moved there, that would alleviate his concerns.
Okay, gentlemen, just moving the sign up may be about ten to twelve feet.
It's a short, yeah, it's a short distance.
We're, we're changing then the boundary of the no parking zone?
Yes.
Would you be actually changing the boundary of it? Not a parking zone in front of his house.
Yeah, he is a hybrid by his house. But maybe the committee would like to look at it.
All right.
Look at it in the back of the next thing.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you to the committee for giving us handicapped parking space that process and the, the several, many residential ways to go. May rose downtown in court.
Okay. Motion to approve a certificate appropriate for this board. One's a sign of one oh seven Broad Street, number two is five hundred feet from it, is also a sign. Third one's a sign of twenty-seven Machon Street, and the last one is a roof at three hundred feet from Broad Street. That's a motion.
There's a motion by Ken.
Second.
The second by Brian. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Yeah, I just have it. Thank you, Ken. Under that committee, uh, we did have a request from the, the committee that's doing the camera project, uh, from, from Ken Melkerberger and from the chief. And Kathy, I'm glad you're here. I don't know if you know about this, but there was a request for a change order and a copy of the change order was provided to council. Because the first phase of the project came under budget, the committee wanted to add an additional camera at the five points at the cover of Machon Street in particular. And the, and the request was for a change order of an amount of eleven thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. Did council get a copy of that?
We mentioned they also had a camera behind the board.
And the camera behind the board.
I, I have it, yeah. I'm, I'm aware of it.
The only, the only, it would, we need to do that by motion if we're going to do it. The only question I have is Kathy, is it, it's going to be on with the vintage streetlights? Is it the only option down there?
Well, it's the only option right now until Penn Dock gets done, they'll work at the five points intersection.
Transportation project.
Yeah, with the transportation project, because of them ripping out the, the overheads and all that, you wouldn't be able to put anything on it now. And Chief Matson would really like to get that part of town covered as quickly as possible. And for that particular one on Machon Street, even to put it on the overheads when they are done, it wouldn't point directly down Machon Street to get, you know, the view of beyond of the traffic going down there, which is what he would really like. So that's why that one on the Machon Street would be just like, to give him the best.
They have three sixty degree view though, don't they?
Well.
These are fixed.
That one would be a fixed one. There will be, when it is all finished, there will be four cameras, I guess, at the, at the five points. One will be going down Machon Street, it'll be a fixed camera. What the chief was looking at was a camera that could zero in on a license plate and actually be able to read it, even though it wouldn't be a license plate recognition camera. Those are the most expensive cameras out there. In order to do that, it would have to be there on Machon Street to get the view of the traffic going north. Then there would be another camera that would be a three sixty that would get, you would have East and West and then Railroad and Center Street. And then there will be another camera that will, uh, will be three sixty that will take in Depot Square and the train station and, and the, the area, that whole area right there, you know, a little bit further away from the intersection.
Okay, so he's not viewing this as a, a temporary location then, until the, the new signals are done, but rather.
Yeah, Machon Street would be permanent.
I think he sees the Machon Street area, because of the situation, as he would see that where.
Well, I think anybody's denying the, the value of the camera there. I think it's just the location. It's not a desirable, it's, it's not really a desirable place for that.
Yeah, it's, and, I mean, we have, we, it's, it's trying to make the best of a bad situation because it's really not tall enough, um, you know, to, uh, to get exactly, you have to get all the way down the street, which is what we want. So it's, we're kind of making the best of it.
I understand, and it, it's difficult to visualize all this, you know, sitting here in this room, but is there, is there any possibility, if it's a, a unidirectional camera, that because of the way that the signal arm is placed, the, the new signal arm is placed, will sort of be pointing in the wrong direction? Is there any kind of modification that could be made to the quote-unquote backside of the signal mass to put the camera there?
Yes, but what they're doing is they're going, what they're doing, the CSI is going to do is get it going a little above and beyond to make sure that the backend there, if we, if it will work in the future to move that camera onto one of the overhead arms, we would be thrilled to be able to do that. Right now, we don't. Yeah.
They just had to look like crap on them.
Yeah, we don't, we really don't want them on those poles because you take away the beauty of, of the pole.
And I guess.
Three cameras on one pole and the pole locks.
Yeah, it just looks yucky and, but hopefully.
There'll be a big shadow on the ground.
Hopefully, once Penn Dock is done, they can come in and, I mean, they are going to do the backend of it so that those cameras can be anywhere, can be moved anywhere and hoping that we will be able to put them on those overhead lights standards once Penn Dock is finished.
Okay, I guess, again, assuming that we, you know, grant this request for change order, then I, I guess all I could ask is that somebody communicate with the contractor who's actually going to do the work to put them on the light poles, to do whatever they can to ensure that they don't damage the poles while they're doing.
Sure.
While, while they're putting those cameras on them.
It will require drilling the pole to run the power.
All holes.
There's not a plate drill on them that they could do that?
Yeah, but you have to drill a hole with a robot and get it to power out, so I have two neutral bars. All the poles that we put these on have to be drilled. You don't have to, it did a basket thing, the problem.
Yeah.
All the poles have, have to be drilled at least once.
And then you can either.
Seal it off.
Right. So we're taking money out of phase two to put into one, does that short chase, short change phase two and then one?
I think we're taking scope activities doing, we're taking money out of phase two. Oh, yes, we are.
You're not taking money out of phase two or it's all coming, money's all coming out of phase one.
For obvious reason, the chief is anxious to get Machon Street under campus.
That's obviously, that's, that's up question.
And the cameras doing the worst?
I don't want to enter that on the tech grounds. I'd like to get some people arrested. But yes, if need be, they, they could.
I think they should want a change order.
We have a motion to approve a change order. We have a second question. Anybody have any questions or comments? Thank you, Kathy, and I'm glad you're here to answer those questions. Anybody from the floor? If one, all those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed, no. Yeah, I just have it. The only other thing under that, that committee is I want to thank the council members and Kevin and Jim Barron, our co-portional officer, and Dan Trader, our housing, our housing rehab officer, for attending the lunch session last week at the county courthouse. We, we had a good turnout and a lot of you were there and showed us some good, good and useful information. And I, I see that you got a copy for our solicitors, some of the new, new options that we have for.
I have like three copies.
And I want to thank council for taking the time last week to attend that session. Ken or John, do you have anything else under that committee? Recreation and new committee, David?
Several. I'd like to make a motion to approve a three-year lease agreement with Jim Fulmer and Morgan Jones for the pool conception stand. And this copy of that lease agreement is included in the packet.
I'll see.
There's a motion by David, second by Steve. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Yeah, I just have it.
Also included in the packet, I'd like to make a motion to approve the season and date of pass fees for the H D dealer memorial pool for the 2011 season.
Second motion. There's a motion by David, second by Brian. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just a comment that there's no changes to the pool or the rate structure this year from last year.
Anybody from the floor? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Yeah, I just have it.
I'd like to make a motion to set Saturday, June fourth, as the opening day for pool.
Second.
Motion by David, second by Steve. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Yeah, I just have it.
Don't know that I need a motion for this, but just as a clarification, we're targeting August twenty-eighth, I believe, whatever the Sunday is before, well, Labor Day weekend as closing day. Sorry to keep you on August twenty-eighth, you're on August twenty-ninth. I apologize for that. Like to make a motion to hire Kyle Smith as pool manager and Adrian Bumbulski as assistant pool manager for the 2011 season at the pay rates of twelve dollars and ten dollars per hour respectively.
There's a motion by David, second by Steve. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Yeah, I just have it.
I'd like to make a motion to hire Chelsea Jones as assistant pool manager as needed for the 2011 season at a pay rate of ten dollars per hour.
Second motion.
There's a motion by David, second by Brian. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Just through assistant pool manager.
Chelsea's effectively the senior lifeguard, which she would be only acting as the assistant pool manager in Adrian's or Kyle's absence. That's the structure that's been in place there for some time.
Good question. Anybody else? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Yeah, I just have it.
And just an announcement, uh, that the pool passes will be available. Ken, I'm sorry, is it tomorrow or?
Pass application?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Well, we can have them available here tomorrow, but as far as putting them out in the other locations, we're, we're going to need them Monday.
Okay, so available for a hall tomorrow for other locations where they're normally located on Monday.
We'll do a press release on that. We'll need some time and then several, we'll call you.
Sure. Thank you.
Has anybody been there at all lately with all the rail railings? Is there any damage or?
No.
No messing from the weather.
The road, road okay?
Well, the road's never quite okay. It's.
Water local for some amount of.
A little dirty through time. It's, I mean, it's always, it's always.
Brings up a good question. Anything else, Dave?
No, I'm done, thank you.
Anybody from the floor wish to address council?
Just a general comment. Tony Rodder, twenty-eighth South Row Road Street, I put mine recycling out of the green trash mail regularly, they take it every week. They will take it and it's not on regular recycling bins, so that's something to consider. It may be more economical to purchase regular trash cans and pass them out at their green than it is those heavy duty buckets that have a tendency to get used for things other than recyclable.
Good point. We also speak with fundraiser, somebody wanted, an organization wanted to sell recycling bins, fundraiser. Thank you, Tony. Anybody else from the floor?
I have two things related to the fire department. This is a little premature, but the latter is scheduled for its five-year recertification. I believe that's the name of the test for, it'll be coming up next year. I don't, I called, made a phone call, tried to get a price on it, nobody returned my call yet. Maybe you can find out, I don't know if we want it scheduled for a budget for next year. We have a, and Kevin and I talked about that too, so leave it on the radar. Okay. Just hope, I'm stretching my mind, I won't go ahead.
I have a question, is that by the manufacturer or by some third party or?
It's a third car.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Also, on nineteenth, the four chiefs are going to be going to nine-one-one center for their communication meeting. And it's a county-wide meeting, it's going to relate into the communications we have now, which is all low band. They're trying to push some stuff on us and we're going to voice our opinion and we're kind of against it because it's going to cost, not only the county money, but every individual company a lot of money. Also, while we're over there, we're going to talk to them about setting up the rip response. We've been having some trouble with Carver County and Soco County because we handle, we run over there and there have been some issues there, but hopefully we're going to get rid of that, taken care of. And while we're talking to Scotty Crater, he had brought up some ways about speeding up the paging system. And one of them would be not blowing the house irons anymore. They, the only way they would, they actually be blown is if somebody pulled a box on. Because right now, what they're doing, they have to hit so many tones for each of the house irons and that you're hearing tones instead of hearing the voice telling you where the fire is. It would be, if they hit a, if you had a structured fire in town, they, the way he wants to set it up, he would hit one tone, it would be an all call, and then he would hear right where the fire is. Right now, they've got to go through the chief's tone, the all call, if they do it that way. And then they have to hit the individual stations to set these sirens off and you're hearing all these tones. It's wasted time. It's just, it's the process of the paging process. So it's going to be a possibility, we'll find out on the nineteenth. And. That mumbles out the fact of the, the Alpha Merit, I mean, because they hit the Alpha Merit instantaneously. Their, their thing is, it's not their primary resource of communication with the fire department, right? We, we went down that road a little before and sometimes you do get the Alpha pager before that even starts ringing. It's just something that you brought up the most. And there's two tones dropped off that list now. I mean, citizens don't have their Soco sirens. Ours never did. Right, and East End is out. Right, and that was, that was my next thing, I had the request from East End. I guess they already sent a letter stating that they didn't want to get it fixed and they wanted to take it off the roof. And basically, we want, we're requesting the same thing. We found out our solar fence is not required no more and we're looking into putting solar panels on top of the building. So that would help us if we got that taken off. I mean, there's no rush to get that. If anybody, I would say East End would be first because they're saying it's actually wobbling. So if it falls on the roof, it could cause damage. And God forbid it falls in the street or something, did somebody or hit a vehicle. But theirs is in rough shape, all of ours, theirs is the roughest one. And I, Rob told me a letter was saying.
It wasn't.
Okay, right, just so. And South Ward feels the same way.
I didn't realize it was getting shady.
They don't want theirs to be blown if we're going to blow that same roof, you know what I mean? Because in three years, it was struck five times by lightning. And really yours is, I guess, the only one left. And I think, I, to be honest with you, I mean, if that's, they turn our committee
Yeah, I think, to be honest with you, I mean, that's the internal committee to look into, but to be honest. I mean, we get rid of the house sirens, I think the happy meeting may be, and we talked about this in the public safety bit, just an concern. That if we took the house sirens off the roof and just kept the bull whistle, it's like some means of awful.
And the ticker tapes would still react.
But I'm saying, still activate the bull whistle because, and we've talked about this, a simple fact of people hear that whistle going off, they know they're looking for something, I know it gives the excitement factor and everything else. But if they hear that whistle, they know something's coming, there's an emergency. Where people that are honed in on the numbers, that hey, they may be in their yard working, I'm for one too. I'm not working the yard, I don't care if it's a pager, but I hear the whistle, I know where I'm going. And even people in the neighborhood that know their general area, if they can just get out there and help anybody or at any time, you know, that distance. So I think it may be a happy meeting that if the company's one and if it's your recommendation, take the whistles off, route the system, that we at least keep the bull whistle system intact, just to do it, you know, that. Because, to be very honest, the bull whistle system, that's the borough system. So the other companies, I guess, technically own their own sirens or whatever. But at least that one is borough operating and own type of thing.
Jimmy said he could get back, was at the next meeting, he's going over on the nineteenth.
So I think if, when you, and unless I'm talking out of place with council, but I think when you go over to that April nineteenth meeting, I think if we could maybe, that could be the thing, saying, look, we can disconnect the other house sirens. A lot of the other companies and chiefs are all right with it, keep the bull whistle intact, that, that would be a compromise. I would think would be a good compromise, one that I'd be very happy with. And the other thing is too, if you need, if you need anything from council to go with, I mean, not to go to the meeting, but any type of correspondence. Because I know how they act, I know how they operate, or a little bit of pressure for you to miss power goes a long way.
I've been talking with cops back and forth and he's, he's suggested the same thing, come over to this meeting. He says, let's hash it out, it's better to be hands-on, you can punch stuff right on the computer.
I know, like, so we, say, we talked about it before, we, we kind of felt that that may be the, knew it was common. But if we keep the bull system intact, the bull whistle, I think that'd be the best bet. That gives us something.
Bull whistle cancel your alarms.
Blasts out your alarm on Friday, it goes, it takes the alarm off, which takes. What's that?
There wouldn't be much for the reason of the.
Sure, because as soon as that pulls, as soon as you pull the box, that alarm is going to sound. So as you pull it off the street, you're gonna sound the, the bull whistle.
You're gonna start to slip through the ticker tapes.
Right, the ticker tapes won't be affected by the.
I want to talk about the house sirens.
They'll still be the fire company and you'll still know, you'll punch out forty-two or whatever it called is.
One a lighter from us.
Let's see what happens on the nineteenth, if we need something.
But I think Brian is either right, if there's, if there's something that we can do, we're all speaking with one voice, we're all council, we'll make that voice be a little louder.
Right, I don't, I didn't, I didn't sense any, you know, hassle with it so far, but we'll find out on the nineteenth.
Thank you, Chief. Kathy, do you have something?
Yeah, I just want to say, I know what Tom's talking about, in my day job, you have a scanner going and it is probably five to ten seconds till all those tones actually go out. But I'd hate you to get rid of all the sirens because, God forbid a tornado or something would come through and you needed some kind of early warning system, you would need some kind of whistle.
Ours is a civil defense and would be used for that, but now that the county and the borough has the voice activated, then it's, it's no longer required. We looked into that.
Yeah, but it would be nice, I guess, if the people could, I, you want some kind of whistle that the general population would know that there's some.
Bull whistle. There's actually, there's still four whistles there. I mean, but you really don't, if people hear that whistle, they're gonna say, now what are they doing back there? I mean, they're not gonna say, it doesn't say tornado, tornado, tornado.
But I know that they go to the South Ford.
No, no. They would hear a sirens, they would. Right, or there's an alert, or they take cover, or there's like, there are four alarms on that.
But I know that it hold to the South Ford when the whistle does go on, I kind of purse, but then I wait to see more.
That's another aspect.
I count the numbers to see if it is in my neighborhood.
You wouldn't believe the neighbors that came down to us since we've stopped blowing curfew. That were asking, you know why, or, and then, oh, thank God, my kid was looking to be a walk-up, married to Florida.
I think we've all been there.
But it's a good point, just because we don't use it now doesn't mean, sometimes, you live in a crazy world.
Yeah, I mean, I would hate you to bring the toll, I think Brian's, you know, keeping the bull whistle and the civil defense before. But yeah, I do know what Tom's talking about.
I mean, East End isn't that.
No.
How heavy is that?
I don't remember, Alan got it off the last time he refurbished it first.
So Alan had it off then?
Yeah, he had it off and refurbished it first.
It's gotta be a big, a crane or anything like that.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think the one that one collapses, doesn't it, doesn't it swing down?
It may, I, it's on a pedestal, I don't know how.
I think it swings down on like a hinge somehow.
Now, that'd have to go for someone to get it wired and set up then to.
Well, if they want it removed, we should remove it before it removes itself.
Well, if it's getting shaky, that's, I'm sure about that. We would just take it down.
Let's take it down. I'll make motion, we take Kathy now.
Second. Motion by Steve, second by Brian. Anybody have any questions or comments? Anybody from the floor? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. Yeah, just have it. Anybody else on the floor? Mayor's report.
I know it's part of new business, but the School and Girls Association Dinner is fourteenth. I think everybody's been asked and I don't think anybody would time it, but there's still time. If anybody wishes to contact me by tomorrow evening, before I put the numbers in, I believe it's ten dollars to members. There will be a representative from the state association will be there to give an update. We will also have all of the local, federal, state, county officials along with any of the candidates running for any of those respective offices. We're all invited and will be there to mingle with the dinner hour, or the social hour from six to seven, and then the dinner at seven. I know that the presentation, Margaret Green, who passed away from Port Cardinal, who's been a keystone in running that borough association for many years, we're gonna be recommending Margaret at the event. I believe her daughters will be there. So I think that's about it.
Is that your graduation, that you think?
I believe it is.
Yes.
I'm sure so, you have, that's something that. So I believe that's, the mayor's report, all of the dues are due twenty-five dollars. If you're, the girls, we just didn't, and the check over as well, and that's about all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So what's the report?
We have just those easements, yeah. Anything more on the easements, Kevin? That's the only thing I really have about this. The only thing I really have about this.
But I mean, anything?
I'm working on a ad letter, I'll tell Michael Page, sit down with him and come up with a course of action. And I'll phone you, Jim. But I do already let everybody get in with the smoke and I called.
They didn't respond to that light outage.
I think they know everybody's perturbed and is looking for a suit, so they don't have to rank it all. I hope they have a definitely renewed fight.
I made a phone call on this to fix the next bit.
Yeah.
If anybody notices the light out, call John.
Probably the property, probably the, the parking areas.
That was the, that was the, 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 the role.
Right, yeah, it wasn't built. I guess it was, I don't know if it was Bill Street. A lot of the end of plus were all by the door down there.
Union, yeah.
Union, yeah.
I was supposed to have my cap cowl, so it was a thing. I did, I did talk to him, but he didn't get out there, so I'll make a note to get him out there again. I know I have a bunch against he was working on.
Any questions, Mike? Unfinished business. New business. We didn't, I didn't name a taxes on the racing committee, we did get active generation applications in, they were reviewed by staff and also by Alan Kerr. If council wants to review those applications, they're out, if, 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 if anybody in council wants to work.
We usually let him take care of that.
If council's probably, that they want to take it with the first one.
Mike?
Yes.
I do have a question on one thing. Kevin, we got a application for soliciting Adam. Did you see this?
I don't know what's. Sorry, what is that for, Steve?
It's for soliciting in Adam. It is just saying the type of goods for the sapkin is cheesecakes and garbage bags. Are these cheesecakes supposed to be refrigerated?
That's, we were, we gave that to Jimmy to check out, I'm not sure what the outcome was. But they're, it's a nonprofit organization based on Allen, and it's a, that particular group is a drug and alcohol rehab center.
Is, is it a refrigerated vehicle or do they need to be refrigerated?
It was a van, I can tell you that, I don't know if it's refrigerated.
It's cheesecakes.
What's going on, somebody's driving around along the sun, he's like door to door.
Well, they got permits, because I was at, they had permits and all the proper identification, was it drug and alcohol, then for rehab center.
We bought one.
Yeah.
I'm just asking because it is cheesecake and.
In July, I'm not sure I would have bought it.
Yeah, we did, we did give a copy of that in June, because he follows up on those things, let me ask him about that.
They lock on my door.
One other thing, one other thing on the new business, it's not on the agenda, but Jim Barron, our code enforcement officer, has indicated that he doesn't intend on retiring in the next few years. And so I think council needs to start, I think we need to start beginning to look at code enforcement after Jim retires. And, you know, it's not an easy position to fill because they have that certain certifications. And so if council knows of anybody who has a particular skill in that, in that area, who might be a good candidate a couple of years down the road after Jim retires, you know, that might be something to draw a look at. So keep an eye out there for any good candidates and it's something that I think we're gonna have to address sooner than later because it's not an easy position to fill. Any other new business? Do we need an executive session?
I think lunch, tour, journey.
Second. Anybody opposed?